Visitors, Lyle, about John Croft. And Kurt Allen. I'm just ma- making sure who's here. Josh. And Mr. Blum. Anybody got anything here to talk about, discuss on the?
Yeah, I just wanted, we have a board meeting, I'm bill representing the village of Elkhart as a mayor. And I was just wanting the board stand on the UC department, I talked to Matt a couple of weeks ago about it. And I I noticed there's a proposal for buying the well. I just wanna know what the, what your thinking is on going forward with. You're part of. I've got my opinion and I can't speak for my board, so.
Right, if if you could show a little patience, Lyle, we have a pretty good report of that in the water and sewer committee thing, if you'd be willing to wait around.
Sure.
We talked about that at pretty, at some great lengths tonight in our committee meeting, so. We got some new numbers and all kinds of stuff, so. Thank you.
John, what would you want to talk about?
This is a portion for agenda items only. Correct? So there'll be a later item for non-agenda items.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I'll I'll address mine under the non-agenda items, thank you.
Josh?
I'm good.
Mr. Blum? Police report?
I have nothing at this moment.
Water and sewer?
Okay, so well four, we had, Matt, you had talked about well four a bit? We had some repairs, it's been flushed, we got a new pump and motor installed and it's back online. I miss anything?
Upon inspection, once we initially pulled the well, or pulled the pump and motor out of the well. We did some electrical testing on the motor and found it to be suspect as in. Pretty much shot. And after further investigation, we found the pump to be the same. So we went down the process of replacing that. Did a rehabilitation cleaning. Got everything back up to up to par and actually performed rather well. So we did, went through our due diligence and did our sampling, everything passed. And we introduced it back to the system on Monday.
Um, on the financial side, we did, we're gonna go ahead and add fifty thousand dollars from the. Uh, water fund to pay in addition on the principal of our loan for the tower renovation. And then on the co-op. What would you like to start? So, as I mentioned last time, the co-op, we originally signed for three dollars per thousand gallons. Uh, since a few towns dropped out. Dawson is currently entertaining the idea of joining, if Dawson joins, it'll be like three dollars and twenty cents per thousand. If Dawson doesn't join, it'll be like three sixty-three per thousand. We are, well, we've looked over our other options pretty well. What am I missing?
Well, I, I mean, obviously, we have the option that we had, that we looked over last year before joining. Uh, you know, before signing the purchase agreement of three dollars to Farnsworth came out and entertained the idea of us doing some work to our own system. Obviously, those numbers will all have to go on over again. We also have been in contact with Illinois American Water to purchase water from them. At that point, at this point in time, the way the numbers look. Um, and I don't know if you got any specifics on the numbers, but that, that's probably gonna be the option that we're definitely not going to choose. As right now, they're coming off at about a break even price for us to fix our own system. And the hardness of the water would be about the same, am I correct in that?
That's correct, yeah.
I guess at this point, I don't know what everybody's thoughts is. And, you know, what does everybody think about three sixty-three when we were, when we were supposed to get it at three?
I feel comfortable saying that three dollars and twenty cents, it's still cheaper and a better option than trying to treat the water ourselves. At three sixty-three, I'm not sure. And I think, uh, Matt is entertaining the idea of having an open. Town hall meeting style thing to kind of go over options and see if there's any public input on it. And if anybody has any public input on that now, I'd certainly be willing to.
Absolutely, Lyle, go ahead.
I just, the, the only thing with the, that the three, the three sixty's gonna be really pushing it. And the forty years out. And they're gonna come up with an agreement here shortly on signing. I know they are.
Well, they're, they're, they're wanting.
It's like April.
They're wanting the board members to do it in their first meeting in March, they'll, they'll know from Dawson on April ninth, our meeting is April tenth, is your meeting April ninth?
Yours is the second.
Yours is the second, okay.
And they'll never get it to us by then, that's.
Right, I agree, I mean, they're wanting us, they're wanting us to commit at three sixty-three, I, I don't think that, I don't think it's the best interest of the city right now to commit to that. Um, you know, I wanna hear what Do- I wanna hear what Dawson's gonna do, that forty-three cents per thousand. Is a, is a fairly high percentage of the cost of, of, of buying water from the co-op. You know, that coupled with the fact that. I don't like the, I don't like that they're pressing the issue for us to commit at that number, seeing as it's quite a bit higher than what we agreed to. Um, you know, whatever input we have. You know, it's entirely up to us with what we wanna do, I, I know that the idea of the regionalization and the co-op is good for all the communities. I would like to be a neighborly city and help out these communities, you know, especially in the respects of Latham and. Harris Town, they're in a lot more trouble than we are, you know, right now, our water is running just fine, it could be better, and that's what we're trying to address for our citizens. Um, but I don't, I don't feel the need to be pressured by them. Um, you know, because of another community or because of any type of construction schedule.
And I know, excuse me, and I know that, uh, Broadwell is gonna be really banking on us to go, but. I've got a couple other options that has been brought up to me. That I'm gonna kinda talk to the board Monday night, but I just, forty years out, that's a long time. And we've already been in a twenty-five year deal that wasn't good.
So, Lyle, I don't know what your other options are, but I know when we had done our look at treating our water ourselves. One thing that we had as a line item, we didn't look into much was to see if Elkhart would be interested in. Going together on a smaller scale, and I don't even know if you're interested in that or not, but.
Well, it's an option, it's, it's something to do, you know. I know there's no water west of, uh, fifty-five minimal, farmers over there are having trouble with shallow wells. I know there's a couple places on the east side that we can. The, our problem is the well is on mine property. And we've got a few more years on the lease and the water's good. It's, they check monthly, we check it monthly. But you just gotta have your options, cuz our backup well only produces about fifteen gallons a minute, I mean, it's. And it's full iron, it's terrible. So, that's where I'm at, I don't know what the board's gonna do. But if I present forty years out and three sixty-three. It's not gonna go.
Is that, is that what you feel is the, the current opinion of your board, Lyle?
Well, yeah.
I mean, without putting it to a vote, you'll never know, but.
I'll never know, there's a couple of them are. You know, I don't know.
Do you feel like three twenty is?
That'd be a little more realistic. But then you're still looking three or four years out because of, uh. Easements. You know.
I think the, the original production schedule was around a year and a half. So. And I appreciate, you know, your input, Lyle, I mean, you're.
And I think that I need to, I think they need to start having meetings, they look face to face, I told you this before.
The last meeting that they had was, was a face to face meeting.
Those phone meetings don't get it.
Right.
Emails. You gotta look face to face when you're talking.
Right, the last one they had was, the last one they had was a face to face meeting, but I agree with you there.
And the next one is a face to face too.
The, the reason they were doing that, cuz there was really nothing to report, mainly because they were waiting on grants.
Sure.
Um, they did receive a three million fifty-two thousand dollar grant from Rural Development. That was just approved through USDA. A month ago. Somewhere around in there.
But they're still nine million short.
I understand.
You know, I don't, we don't have the income, our budget, you know, will not withstand.
Right.
So.
And, you know, seeing where we're at on it, I mean, I would say that most signs point that we probably will join the co-op, but not at the three sixty-three. You know, our other, our, our other option is saying we're paying three dollars and that's it, we're either in or we're out. Um, you know, looking at the map, Lyle, you can tell pretty obvious that if, that if Plasky decides to not be in that, it's gonna be hard for Elkhart and Broadwell to be, because they're gonna go right through us.
You know, I just wonder what your feeling is.
You know, and they're gonna use a lot of, they're gonna try to use a lot of pressure from our big tower to try to feed that to you as well, so I understand your concern.
Is there another comment about that?
I'm just having a question, I didn't realize I was gonna discuss a water issue, but my question is on the co-op. It has nothing to do with your decision, it's my, it's the general question on the co-op, are you just contracting for water from the co-op?
We will buy water from the co-op, yes.
And we will be a member of the.
Joining the co-op and have a seat on the board.
We have a seat on the board. There are currently seven communities that have joined, that have, that have formed this, uh, United Regional Water Co-op. Each, each, uh, even though we're the biggest user, we only have one seat, uh, each, each, each one of the founding communities each has a seat on the board.
Co-op is a corporation?
It is a not-for-profit.
And it's not a public body?
It is not.
Well. Not trying to sway your vote, but. There was a lawsuit going on down in McCook County, which is very issue. I would highly recommend. Speaking to the.
That was my next thing.
Speaking to the people in part that have signed on to that lawsuit, that it's not us. It's the citizens of, of Carlinville.
Do we have a. A ballpark figure on what, uh, our own, um, equipment would be in our field ring system?
Yes, that's what we paid Farnsworth to come up with, and that was a preliminary estimate, but it looks like at three sixty-three, it's about a break even if you look out over forty years. I do feel like if we do that ourselves, it'll remove the nitrates, but we'll still have hard water. And that was a preliminary estimate, it didn't include extra labor for running the plant. And costs for that are likely to go up, whereas if the co-op. I have the feeling that if other towns get on down the road, the costs could go down. Maybe that's naive, I don't know. Does that answer your question, Darryl? Anything else?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess we're. Moving forward, we have to see what Dawson says. You know, and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Another waiting period, we've only been doing this for about a year now, but it is what it is.
It's good that we're, we're in a situation where, I mean.
We're not legally bound to anything yet, so.
We're a few years out before we have major issues too, unlike, unlike Harris Town and. Okay, anything else from water and sewer, I don't think so.
Um, Josh and I have diligently here this last week, week and a half. Uh, been out on the dirt pile there at the force main. Replacing the dirt, piling it back up and working it back down. And getting it prepped for the farmers for this framework, so we're ahead of schedule on that. We got the majority of it done before all the rains came, and that's what we're waiting on right now for that to dry up a little bit so that we can give it a finishing touch. And then basically, it's just, uh, finishing up the, the field plane that the trucks drive up and down. Leveling that out a little bit more. And cleaning up the railroad site there by lift road. And so that, for the most part, is looking real good, and they ought to be able to be on schedule for their planting season and working their fields. And then the rest of the time, uh, mostly, uh, I've had some work orders that we fulfilled. To take up some of the miscellaneous jobs around the town and some trees. I've been in touch with Joe Lucas on many trees, so we've got some, uh, concerns about some, and those are all on a list that I have now. And I can pretty much, I'm gonna go ahead, start on some of those. And when it comes to. Some of the bigger ones, I'll have to get with the, my, uh, committee to find out. What options they would like me to pursue when it comes to some of the taller trees. See too much of a difficulty with that, so I think that'll be all workable. Other than that, I have no real major concerns at this time.
You've met with the Farnsworth group again, like we talked about at our committee meeting, and that's, that's still on pace with the current schedule that they gave us at the last meeting?
Yes, I.
Right now, we're working on planning and. We'll probably have a resolution by the, the goal to have the MFT resolution was, I think, I think May.
Right.
So that should still be on schedule.
We'll have something maybe by this next meeting. Uh, they came out, we went over the town square area, we looked at the, the problem child and. They're getting the estimates that we're in need of as to the repairs. It's basically gonna be starting from the top of the square or the hill. And we will work our way down the hills, uh, as time permits down the road, even for future use. There was one concern that I had, that I discussed with them, uh, yesterday. About the handicap approach to the square. I've heard several different things and they assured me at the moment, they're going to try and put that also in with the figures. As to whatever is going to be left out of this money, to see if we can have that fixed or replaced.
So in that, uh, I know there's talk with the Economic Advisory. Association that they're looking to kinda help with a unified plan for the square.
Okay.
Concrete work may be included, maybe replacing the retaining wall.
Maybe we can make a little adventure on that.
Yeah, I don't know where's a good stopping point for which project, but if we could just. At least talk about what we're thinking on the handicap, I'd like to not have to put a bunch of money in the handicap and then.
To that, uh, until I get back with you on that. Uh, I'm under the impression, if we were to do the handicap. Uh, without having to redo the whole entire square, once you get into the sidewalk area and start replacing some of that. Then the state can say you're going to do this or that. Uh, you don't really have much of a choice. If we're just kinda fixing up or replacing to a point what we already have, without getting into the replacement of sidewalks. Uh, I think I'm under the impression that we can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
So this is what I want clarified.
Sure.
And that should be all done before the next meeting, I think.
Okay. All right, uh. I would like to discuss the. Mayor, your yard and that whole situation, I think that's something a hot topic, community, I think we need to address that. So. Either one of you wanna speak to that of how that went down, or?
I built up, was talking to Bill one day, went at lunch and we made up a work order for it, he come down, pulled the concrete out. That's all I did, there was no digging or nothing to pull concrete out from around the tree.
What day was this? Monday?
I'm not sure what day he did it.
Oh, the day that I did the work?
Well, um, that he requested it and that we did the.
It was requested back in latter part of February.
February.
And the work was done last week.
And I, I did, I did make a, a point to tell Bill and Josh. That that would be the last thing when there was absolutely nothing else to do.
Now, I can put an add to that. When we did this. I was putting my own plan together on that particular road. And his, he just happens to live on that road. In order to do what I was looking to do, I had to start that one in particular first. Cuz what I had was two truckloads of gravel. Because I proceeded to fix and repair some of the culverts and approaches to people's driveways. Because of the rains, it washed a lot of the gravels away. I did not do, uh, the entire driveway like some people may have claimed. I only did the approach work and no further than the sidewalk. That was all done after I did, uh, removal of the concrete. What this concrete consisted of was two, it was two women, or two and a, two and a half pieces of concrete that had been broken. And it was heaved in an upward position on the ends. Where a tree, the roots were actually growing over the top of the concrete. So it's something that could not be removed by hand. We used a backhoe to get underneath the edge of that concrete and pop it loose. If it didn't pop loose, we used the teeth of the concrete, or the backhoe edge. To snap the concrete so we could get underneath it and pull that out from underneath those roots. When this was removed. This is the. If you can imagine walking out your front door. Once you cross the main sidewalk, it's from the sidewalk. To the road that a mailman or someone would walk up to your front door, just a small, about an eight foot section. So once we got that there broke up, we used the backhoe to pick up the concrete and place it in the back of the truck. And then we hauled that away out to the pond. While I was there at the pond, I took. What, uh, two backhoe loads of dirt. And hauled it back to the city and placed it around the tree to protect those roots. Water, whatnot, had eroded and got up underneath the concrete to begin. It heaved it, that's why I put, uh. The dirt back in its place, so I backed the truck up to it and dumped it. I made a big pile, we used the backhoe bucket to slide the dirt off to the side. Because I didn't feel like scooping all day long, I used the backhoe to, to move the dirt in place, then I raked it all in by hand. The job was done and it took no more than, uh, a half hour.
So.
Then I committed to.
It appears that. There's many trees in town where the roots are showing, and we don't go around to all those and cover them up with dirt. There's many places in town where the sidewalk is heaving. And it looks as though. We prioritize the mayor over everybody else.
Okay, that's where I came in and told you. I had the truckloads where I was replacing the gravel along the entryways of these people's driveways, all along that road. There might have been one or two that didn't need it, but the rest of them did.
So how does that play into the sidewalk?
Pardon?
How does that play into the sidewalk, which is nowhere near the entryway to the alley?
And the terrain and dirt.
Well, by removing the, the concrete, I exposed some of the roots. And I didn't wanna kill the tree.
So if your plan was to, if your plan was to go by and put gravel on everybody's driveway entrance to the city. Where did the, where did the sidewalk come into play?
I was using good judgment and time for the use of my equipment. I'm there, why come back and do something again and, and go from there?
Do you disagree that this looks like Jim's a friend and he used his preferential position to?
No preferential treatment for him, I would have done it for you, her, or anybody else in this community.
Is there any amount of other work orders out there currently that we haven't, that we haven't intended to?
I've got several and I can show them to you.
Just, I mean, you can just give me a rough number, Bill.
Oh, I got.
And is there any of them dated before the one, the work order that the mayor requested?
Uh, those I've already turned in.
Okay.
And, uh, they're on Paula's computer.
Okay.
Yeah, I've done many of them, and the ones I have now are the ones that are not completed or we haven't started yet.
Right.
The ones that I have completed have been turned in and are on the computer with Paula.
Sorry, you were gonna say something?
I, I just, I'm just not happy with it, I just, we are here to serve, not be served, I, I would have never, Jim, I would have never.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing, like what you said when it came to, uh, uh, how it may look.
Disagree.
I'm looking.
No matter what, I don't care if it took twenty minutes, don't care if it took five minutes, don't care if it took two minutes, should've just, it just.
And, and you know what, on that, you know, since there's been kind of a, a, while we're on this subject, you know, uh, we changed the ordinances. A couple, it, it looks like it doesn't have an ordinance date on it, but Title Four, uh, Section Two. Uh, so it'd be just seven, four, two. Uh, we put a thing in there because we were having problems with people not mowing the boulevard. Now, I, now, Lynn looked into this, the city does own the boulevard, we have a utility easement on it. But it, it states very clearly here, you know, and this should solve any argument about, about the approaches that people are getting that they're gonna be continuing to ask for, but I'll just read it. It shall be the responsibility of each owner, tenant, or person residing on the property to sustain and maintain the boulevard strip adjacent to the property. And also not permit any weeds, grass, or plants, other than trees, bushes, flowers, or ornamental plants. Not in conflict with any other sections of this ordinance, to grow to a height exceeding an average of eight inches anywhere in the city. Any such plant, grass, or weeds exceeding such height are hereby declared a nuisance. Boulevard strip for the purpose of this section shall be defined as the area between the property line and the street commonly covered in grass. This responsibility shall confer no rights on the property owner, tenant, or person residing in the property, and nothing in this section shall be construed to compromise in any manner. The absolute right of the city to use any city boulevard strip as it deems advisable, with or without notice to the adjacent property owner, tenant, or person residing on the property. I mean, I, that's very clearly in the ordinances, it is not our responsibility to maintain the boulevard of people's, of people's residences. Never has been.
And I never asked them to maintain it, cuz I cut the grass and everything else, I do maintain it. Uh, I just couldn't get the concrete out.
This, this goes above grass, I mean.
And I understand it, but I couldn't, I couldn't get it. Taken out of it.
The, but, okay, if you couldn't get it out, that doesn't mean it's the city's responsibility to do it for you, Jim.
It's your responsibility to hire someone to do it for you.
It shall be the responsibility of each owner, tenant, or person residing on the property to sustain and maintain the boulevard strip adjacent to the property.
Now, in, in, you have access to read this as well, I mean.
It's out there.
Bill, I mean.
Oh, I understand it, and, and I'm sorry if, if, uh, for a simple fact of it is, I. I didn't, you know, I could have probably. Had Jim Boy come down and do it and take it out for me.
So this is not the city's sidewalk?
It's on the city, it's the city sidewalk.
It's on the city boulevard, but it is not our responsibility to maintain that, and that includes dirt on trees, that includes concrete shards or anything like that. We, it's simply not our responsibility to do that.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When these trees are removed from the boulevard, does that mean I have to leave the hole there?
So the trees are an entirely different section from what, from what this is, this was, this was mainly just in the, in the, in the maintenance of the boulevard. That's covered in the tree ordinance, which, if you read that long enough, your eyes will go crossed, but.
Yeah, but I mean, when the wood chipper comes up and chips up the roots and the, the ball of the, and am I, cuz I, I have a. A citizen that wants some dirt put on that property.
So in the, in the tree ordinance and I.
You know, when, when we, when we cut down the tree, we will make it, we will make it the, to the best of our ability to make sure that, that the ornamental value of the boulevard is retained.
So we typically remove the wood chips after it's chipped and we fill the hole with dirt. But that's not what this was.
Okay.
So I, I would like to point out.
See the difference when it comes to the maintenance for my machinery.
Honestly, Bill, if, if.
If you don't see the difference, then we have a big problem.
Well, I'm looking for an explanation because I was never told any of this, uh.
So I think part of the problem is here, I, I know you like to tell people that you don't listen to the, the Street and Alley Committee, but Jim's your boss, I, I know you've said that to many people, and I, I would. I know we've argued about this before and we've brought out the ordinance to show that, you know, you do work with the Street and Alley Committee, that's what they're there for. If you have questions about things, that's what they're here for, and just like Jim, you know, if you had a question about something, you could have asked, but I, I know you don't like to communicate with the rest of the council, so. I'm not sure how to help you there, but Bill. These guys are here to help you.
I realize that, and I'm going along with what you're saying on that, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just looking for clarification. So this doesn't come across again, because I'm seeing something every month. Some of this, he said, she said, this, that, it gets con-
These, these are the rules. I read them to you. So now there's no more, he said, she said, I was always told the city maintains that. It's right here on what we do and do not maintain.
Where do I find these when?
In the city code. In the city code, Bill. I mean, there's copies under every, every alder. Every alderman's desk, there's a city code, it's available online, you know, and 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 before. You know, if you have any questions about something that might be, you know, unclear. Either call, call the Streets and Alley Committee, talk to the mayor, talk to any of the aldermen, or refer to the code yourself. You know, I mean, that's the best, that's the best advice I can give you.
Okay, I've got an article here. Lincoln signs electric agreement. Now, we did that. Probably three, four years ago. We did it for a couple of years and saved some money, but then it, they. People we were buying from couldn't get it any cheaper, so we quit it. But now Lincoln. Signed a contract for uh. And uh Amarin right now is point zero six one seven per kilo one hour. And they signed for a contract for point zero four nine eight. So it'd be for an average user, it would be better than ten dollars probably savings. And uh and and when, when we first started, we did it just on the city bill. We, that year, we saved nine thousand dollars on the city's bill. So it was not on the agenda, we can't write on it tonight, but we need to talk about it. I'll contact these people if you're interested, if we're not, we'll drop it.
I know that the, the Farnsworth group that we've been working with has an electrical aggregate person and, you know, they haven't came back by in a while. There was a spell there where. There was a different aggregate person here once a month.
That's when, that's when it was pretty even. What they'd get it for and what Amarin was selling it for was pretty even. Now, there's a pretty good chunk of.
Was that Stone River Group is who they went with?
Uh they went with uh. Just got it right here. Stone River Group.
Have you? Are they available to come to a meeting anytime soon or?
I think so.
Absolutely.
You know.
I've been looking into that too.
Would they be able to come April? Tenth?
I'm sure they would.
If you would, go ahead and ask them and then if they can, you know, make sure you have Kelly put it on the agenda. Thank you, Daryl.
Anything else under Streets and Alley?
So where do we cover sidewalks? What is our duty on sidewalks? Says here in the code, uh repairs and defects. Repairs, all public streets, alleys, and sidewalk painters shall be in good repair. Such repair work, whether done by the city or the abounding owner, shall be under the supervision of the superintendent of Streets and Alley. Defects, it shall be the duty of every city officer or employee becoming cognizant. Of any defect in any street, alley, or sidewalk, or any obstruction thereof, to report the same to the superintendent of the Street and Alley. That's all it says. As far as defects and repairs. So where do we go with that? Where does he go with that?
Just like anything else, you know, one pothole is bigger than another. I think the best course of action for that is to. You know, make a list. If that's, if we can use some of our motor fuel tax money, I know that the sidewalks are included in that just for maintenance. Usually. A lot of engineers can put in maintenance. Yeah, they can. I've talked to the Farnsworth group about it. You can use, you can use motor fuel tax money to maintain. You can't build brand new ones, but you can use it to maintain the sidewalks. I'm sure that they're putting something in there for that. Uh Greg Gusserson always did. To me, that's just a matter of getting a list of ones that are in the most disrepair, looking at the budget, seeing what ones we can and can't afford to fix. And and make the best, make the best decision we possibly can.
Buffalo just went through, the city of Buffalo just went through that and they, they got some motor fuel taxes done. And they did all the oil and chip. And they went back to get more. For some repairs on some of the roads. And they told them, uh no, they could not. Get more money unless they did sidewalk repair because they went through and they was looking at the. Engineer went through and seen some sidewalks that needed, was dire need of it, so they went in and. And uh the motor fuel tax did pay for the sidewalks and the only way they could do that. If the sidewalks were. Coming to the street, they had to put the pads down. Red pads for the handicap.
Oh, okay.
So they uh they did, motor fuel tax did pay for sidewalks. And I think I, I mentioned that to Bill, he was saying something about the handicap. If, if you go to repair. Sidewalk on an end on the, to a street entrance, you do have to put the handicap there. And motor fuel taxes will pay for that.
As long as it's in your resolution that you turn it into the state, you can spend motor fuel tax money on a lot of stuff, but you have to tell them that you're planning to do it. You know, we'll obviously over appropriate for the money that we have. I think right now there's around a hundred and. Hundred and ten thousand dollars in the motor fuel tax fund. Um we didn't use very much of it last year. You know, when we come up with a list of what we can spend it on, as long as it's approved by the state, you darn right, we can use that money for that.
And and I think, I think it's, I think it's great that we could do that for some, some of our sidewalks, especially down around the square.
So if I wanna replace the sidewalks in front of my house, who do I need to speak with or what kind of deal do I need to get started to do that?
This is one of those things that I believe. In the past, most people that have built sidewalks have paid for either. Most of it or all of it themselves. Maybe somebody that's been around longer.
I've looked in the ordinance books a lot of, a lot of places and there's nowhere where it says what the, what the defining rule is on that mic. I don't know if the city always handled it as a case by case basis. You know, obviously some properties are bigger than, are bigger than others, so sidewalks are gonna be different. That's a tough one.
We're just, we're thinking about putting, pouring a new pad up to the front porch. And I'm not pouring a, a good pad over an ugly pad, so I figured I would just replace it, filling up my property.
Right.
So I was just trying to see if uh like maybe they don't get rid of the old concrete. If we are still allowed to get rid of stuff like that here, or will I have to haul that off myself and what would be the percentage wise?
Matt, do you have something to add?
Yes, generally what has been done in the past, which I'm not saying is right, wrong, or indifferent. But, and I don't know because I dealt with the. Witnessed this twice. The landowner, like you're saying, wanted to replace the sidewalk. The city gave him the approval to remove the sidewalk and. Take the waste to the pond because it was a city sidewalk. As long as they basically paid for the labor, the city paid for the concrete. Which was the cheaper end of obviously that job. It's very labor intensive. That's what's been done in the past. I'm not gonna say it's right, wrong, or indifferent. That has been the procedure.
If it helps any, any matters at all, I'll pour it all the way to the corner, just mark hole into the blockless, for example.
What is it, go ahead.
What if we come to like a unified sidewalk plan? I have no idea what's in the thing, but. I know what we can't do is sign up to give everybody a new sidewalk and pay for concrete all over town. So what if we come up with some kinda. Plan for.
Some type of application, kinda like a tree request?
Yeah, allocating five grand a year or whatever that number is and have applications and prioritize it based on. I don't know what, usefulness to the city or whatever.
That would be a pretty, I think that would be the best way to handle it. In my opinion.
So is it out of line to just pour it herself? That way there's no cost to the city except for the waste?
I think the only thing that I would.
As long as it's inspected.
Inspect, yeah, just to have somebody come down to make sure that it's not making an S.
All right.
Does anybody have any objections to that?
I remember eight years ago, a resident, I can't remember what policy it was in, you know, he poured it. He just poured it on the surface, two before four, so it was three and a half inches above red. And that calls kind of a ha ha. So I, I think inspection would be a good idea prior at some point, perhaps before it's poured.
Would the building inspector oversee something like that?
Be a possibility, yeah. I think you'd probably be willing to do that.
Well, I mean, you were just looking for maybe to s- see that it was done right or whatnot.
I think it's probably a, a good idea. I, I'll uh, I'll look into that more about some kind of allocating so much money a year and up with a plan. I, I don't know what it'll look like yet, but. I'll take that, that idea.
Finance?
Um our deposit since the last meeting, thirty nine thousand, four thirty one, twenty three. Um includes the local share, income tax, state use tax, telecommunications tax, video tax, one percent sales tax. The business district tax and um the franchise fee from uh Amarin's local. Also, um as Andrew alluded to, the finance committee met and would propose to. Make a one-time principal payment onto the water tower loan since. I don't wanna say there's extra money, but there's enough money in there to go ahead and pay it up on the principal on the tower loan, the water tower loan. Um and we also talked about when we're doing the budget for next year, looking at adding. Maybe a quarterly principal payment to get it paid up, but we'll visit that as we do the budget next year to see. Um how feasible that is to maintain daily operations and anything that might come up. Oh, and we also talked about um kind of doing the same thing with the caterpillar loan, which is the back. Back tobacco is, um as we're budgeting next year to look at. Um maybe um doubling up payments so that we can get that paid off. By um next July, cause that's when the balloon payment comes due, so if we can pay ahead on it. Then it would be, could be completely paid off. By next July. But again, we'll have to look at the budget and see.
So on.
How that will go in there.
On the budget for the water and sewer, I feel very confident that we've cut our expenses and. Know that we're at within the next year and feel comfortable doing that for the streets and alleys. I'm not. Having a lot of new stuff and new salaries coming out of it. I'm not super confident about that.
We'll have to look at the budget and see if that's feasible without putting strains on.
Are we presenting budgets at next meeting?
We'll have to do the appropriations in May. It would probably be a good idea to start on that, yes. If that's something you think you guys could handle, that would be great.
So you would like Matt and Bill to give their budget for their specific departments? Matt, do you think it's something you can do if you need help?
Yeah, we can help.
Let me know.
We can work.
Bill, I, I think, have you had a chance to look through the budget yet?
I've gone through it a little bit and trying to understand it still here.
Okay, so.
And you're wanting what now?
A preliminary budget for next year's operations.
Okay.
So take what you have. If you need to move things around. Put it together.
I'll get together with our committee and we'll patch it out.
Perfect.
Public comments on non-agenda.
I was gonna talk about the. Concrete and the tree thing. That's already been talked about. Yeah, another, another issue I had was uh. Understand that. That there was a job or a contractor into when it wasn't put out for bid. That exceeded the. Threshold where it was supposed to be put out for bid, that true or?
I believe it did, yes.
And then also, there was work performed on the railroad profit without permission and it's been costing the city. Twenty three thousand dollars or close to. For a flagger and union labor.
So it's one of those things, it's not a direct expense, uh but a bit of background and. In the past, we've had sewer issues along our railroad easement and the city has always had a good relationship. They've sent out a flagger, worked with Matt. And usually, I don't think we've ever got a bill for a flagger before. And it's always been a, a nice relationship. After. The work was mentioned, now we needed a flagger, it was a huge deal. Suddenly, our relationship with the railroad is strained. And yes, we did have to pay a substantial amount of money. For that.
The issue with. People paying their water bills on time. Do you have a lot of people in town that don't pay their water bills on time?
Roughly ten percent.
Do you have any of them that don't have to pay their late fees? Like ninety nine dollar late fee?
Everybody pays their late fee.
Did the mayor pay his this month?
He did not pay his late fee this month.
So everybody doesn't pay their late fee?
He hasn't paid his late fee. Yet. It is still on his account to pay. It is an outstanding balance.
Well, outstanding balances are, are. On the rear edge of debt to the municipality. So. The other question I have is this clerk sending the required mandatory notice under the new change to the municipal code. I believe it's a registered letter to give the. Mayor notice that he's behind and a time to pay it.
By, are you referring to like a late water bill?
Yes, it was a, an indebtedness to a municipality. Cause it, prior to several years ago. Uh once you became in arrears of a debt to a municipality and you're an elected official of that municipality. Boom, you lost your job. People in Clarendon Hills and Naperville, unfortunately for the residents of the state. Petitioned the legislature and got that changed, so now there's several steps that they have to go through in order to remove a person from office. Who continually or refuses to pay a debt owed to the municipality that they're a elected official on. And the main issue, one of the main steps is the city clerk. Is mandated under the law, now the municipal code, to send a notice to the mayor. I'm asking if that was done yet.
So some of our clerks. Duties are performed by our city collector and we have sent late bills and I don't know if that. That's to the extent that we have notified. I'm not sure if that satisfies your question.
Well, late bills are fine for everybody that's not an elected official in the municipality.
So elected officials must receive a certified letter from the clerk stating of their indebtedness?
I'm not saying they must receive it, I'm saying the clerk must send one. There's a, there's a difference. And the difference is, and and the mayor's probably gonna pay his bill tomorrow. I don't, I don't know. But if you had a mayor or an alderman. That said, you know, I'm not gonna pay my bill because I'm an alderman and I think I should get water for nothing. You could never remove that person from office until the clerk at X number of days when it was late. Sent that registered letter. sent that registered letter to the person that was in arrears, in, in arrears of the debt. That's the only rea, that's the only way to enforce the municipal code, and it has to be done, it's not an optional item. Sending a late bill, like you would normally send, you know, me or somebody else that's not sitting up here for being laid underwater, doesn't cut it with the municipal codes.
That is very interesting, I was not aware of that, and I think that's something that we'll look into and probably start implementing.
And I think that would fix a lot of the late payments and.
Could you, do you have the, where I could read up on this?
Actually, yeah. I don't have it on my.
We can, we can send it to you.
That'd be appreciated, thank you.
We went through this, what town was it?
Clarendon Hills, Naperville, and then up, up in Hancock County.
Hancock County, they're explaining pretty good to them guys.
There were six aldermen that refused to pay water because they believed they were entitled to water because they were aldermen. And the municipal code was real clear that.
Were they clinically insane?
That's a great question.
We, we think they might have been.
There must have been something in the water.
So, so that was it, that's the extent of my questions, the, the enforcing the, you know, making sure the clerk sends out that registered letter to any elected official or officer of the city that's in arrears of debt, any debt, parking ticket, water bill, whatever. That has to be sent, otherwise, if you don't send a letter, you can't remove from office. Another part of it, I would hope that the next time a contract comes up that requires a bidding on it, that it actually get bid out.
I would very much like that too.
So, I don't know what the municipal code says about this, if I may inquire to you. The contract that was signed with the union workers was not approved by the city council.
All contracts are approved by the council.
We understand that, and I, I always want to know what the legality of that was.
You have the authority to, the council has the authority to refuse to pay that bill, and a person that signed that contract can come out of his own pocket.
And case law will support that, and we're not attorneys, but I can assure you, case law will point to that, and I'm confident your attorney can find that case law.
The union can sue the city all they want, they won't get a dime from the city until the city council.
It was not legally approved, in fact, a citizen can sue under a false claims act to recover any money that has been paid because it's an invoice that was never presented on a contract legally binding to the community.
How does that work after we have, after the city has paid it? Could we collect from said signing?
It'd be a false claims act.
I believe a citizen, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Who signed the contract?
The mayor.
You know that right, that's three times the damages.
What do you mean by three times the damages?
If, if, if a false claim wins in court, that's triple damages, triple the amount that was paid when it shouldn't have been paid.
To the person that entered the contract without the permission of the city council?
To the owner of the contract.
Council gets somebody by, the person that sued gets somebody by, and the attorney general, if they assess, gets one third of it.
And that's from a citizen?
Yeah.
Any citizen?
Any, any citizen can present a false claims lawsuit.
So the council never voted to pay it?
We, we approved the bill, but after looking into it, when it's, we didn't, we didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a lump sum. These, these union workers that were helping with the forced man, we were paying their, you know, we were paying their paychecks every month. We would get billed, we were approving those bills as going, as the higher it got, the more and more we looked into it, then we dug up the contract.
Sorry, change one thing, our salaries that we pay to our employees are not in the bills that we approve. Somewhere our code says salaries are elsewhere. So for the first couple months, I believe Jim asked the clerk, or, or Crystal to cut checks to the unions, to the union.
Contract.
Yeah, outside of the approval of the bills, so they were not approved for the first two months until we discovered that we were paying them and what they were costing, and looked into it further. And then they turned up on our bill sheets to be paid like normal bills.
One of you guys can go with it, the sheriff, file a complaint if you want to.
Is the sheriff the best person to talk to on that? The state's attorney, or who would you recommend that we talk to?
Personally, if you're not going to file a false claim and you want to do something else, firstly, I would recommend contacting the sheriff, write it all down. Show them the municipal code or by legal law. Let them do an investigation, that leave a confirmative behind. Um, that's against the police team, but he would probably pawn it off to them anyway because he would be conflicted. That's the reason why I said go to the sheriff's department. Now, if the sheriff's his brother, then I would say go to state police.
Don't laugh, we've seen that.
That's my personal opinion, I'm not a attorney. That's all I have.
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple issues I'd like to piggyback off of that. These, this contract with the union or whoever that you entered into, are you involved with that union and getting, doing work with that union?
I'm a member of that union.
I didn't ask that, I asked whether or not you were doing work with that project in any way.
I was, but I was not getting paid.
So you worked for free?
Yes, I did.
Okay, but you signed a contract on behalf of the union that you worked for without board approval, is that correct?
I come to the, uh, the council and I said that I would like to, I wanted to hire a couple part-timers and they said that would be fine, and sure, I did not come to them with the contract.
So you did sign a contract without board approval?
A project, project on the contract.
My understanding, employment is also under the purview of the board. At least the way I read the municipal code, I may be wrong on that, but are you familiar with Article Eight, Section One of our state constitution? Public funds, property, and credit shall only be used for public purpose. I understand what you described earlier sounded like an ordinance violation, if you've got an ordinance person that enforces ordinances. If there was an ordinance violation on the concrete and the tree issue, is that not an ordinance violation?
That would, the, the city council handles the general penalty for most ordinance violations.
Sounds like you described an ordinance violation, therefore, I don't know whether it's not an ordinance violation. But more importantly, the fact that you've taken action well outside the law. Under the criminal code, it's called official misconduct. And that would be the first place I would go to file a criminal complaint or an investigation on the actions that you've taken. Because you've acted well beyond any statutory authority. And considering it was involved with a union that you're a party to, working with, it sounds like you did a pretty good deal for them. And I think if a good investigator and a good attorney could make a case for that. Probably would solve everything if you just resigned, quite honestly. That would probably be the best thing to do in light of what's coming. Because I can assure you, our standpoint, we're, we've been flooded with phone calls. We're a nonprofit, local government accountability organization. I can't tell you how many phone calls and pictures been sent to us in the last three days. And it's not pretty. And we haven't even FOIA'd one thing yet, but just to find out, you've already admitted, you've signed contracts without approval. Just do everybody a favor and just resign, seriously.
I FOIA'd stuff last fall.
Last fall?
Yeah.
So was that early when you were getting that? I remember all this week we got hammered, but anyway, that's all I have for my public comment, thank you.
Approved the bills, any other public comments?
Yes.
Yes, Matt?
I would like to make reference and thank Bill and who all got my street light back in Buckle's Drive. It's up and around, and it sure does look nice out there.
Oh, did Amaran finally get all that done? Good deal.
Was it very nice, I'd like to thank you guys for giving that comment.
Is it LED?
Yes. Thanks for asking.
Approved bills.
Any other public comments?
Economic Development Resources, five hundred and twenty dollars, ten cents. Midwest Meter, one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Water Solutions Unlimited, one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, twenty cents.
Matt, the, the bill to Midwest Meter, is that, what is that for?
As for meter replacement project, it would continue to go on.
Is that more meters or just touchpad?
One meter and or more, another ten endpoints.
Excellent.
And pit lids as well.
Excellent, and the PH Brottenensons, can we know what that is?
Again, that was the cold mix for fashion repairing holes in the road.
And is anybody know what the Economic Development Resources for five twenty?
I would imagine that's probably the firm that's been handling our TIF. I'm, I haven't talked to Paula here in the last, and I don't think Paula's here tonight. Hey, Tim, could you come in here for a second? Paula's not here, this, this, Economic Development Resources, I know that you've been kind of, I know you're very knowledgeable about the TIFs, and we're probably going to have you do it for us here the next, isn't that the company that we've been using to, to maintain and follow the paperwork with the state for our TIF?
Yes, they're the consulting company that's been doing the filings and also doing the annual meetings, which incidentally is next month's schedule.
Okay, so that would, so that would be the maintenance of the TIF.
Any other questions on the bills? I make the motion to approve the consent agenda, including the bills and the extra fifty thousand dollars towards the principal of the water tower loan.
Order my bubble?
Yes.
Knower?
Yes.
Maximer?
Yes.
Neville?
Yes.
Paulin Quest?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next agenda item, I had this put on there, the mayor's position and the interest of the community, before we go on, to make sure I'm not the only one pushing through this, does the council believe we should discuss this?
Of what's come to light, I don't think there'd be a better time.
Daryl and Joyce, do you agree we should discuss this?
Yes.
My next question is, I really don't want to wait toward the next Kincaid or some other municipality, so I would like to know, does the rest of the council feel that the, that we should as a council take some kind of action on the mayor, on Jim? I don't know what that action will be yet, I just want to get people's input. I'll go first, but I plan to go around to each alderman and kind of go from there. But to be honest, given Jim's incompetence, the division he's given to this organization between our workers, between the council itself and himself, the majority of the time I spend working on city stuff is more stressful than it's ever had been. And to be honest, like, it seems like it's constantly something Jim has done. I hear from people outside of the town, when Jim represents the city, it's usually an embarrassment. And I don't think that's good for us, jeopardizing our situation with the railroad, stuff like that. Jim, when you ran for the mayor's position, you went on, you said you were going to work with the council and bring everything up to the council, and every little thing you were going to bring to us and discuss, you haven't brought one thing to the council. I've tried meeting with you one-on-one to try to see if we could work together, no change. Seems like you'd rather listen to Jim Boykugan than anybody on the council, and that's how I feel. Most of the time, you try to sidestep the council, having special meetings outside and stuff like that. You've worked against the council by when we were trying to come to the recycling terms. You asked the recycle person specifically to not call back the alderman, but that you were the boss, and train wreck that. I don't know, I can go on more, but my trust in you as a mayor is completely gone, and I think, given everything that's happened, this and the most recent long line of list of things, I, I think it'd be best if you resigned. But that's my opinion, and I, I want to hear from every alderman. Does anybody like to go next, or we can go around here?
Given the recent events that have come to light, I think the biggest question should be whether or not he wants to resign before we take further action.
Rachel, what do you think?
I'm in agreement that, you know, Jim, I just think it's in your best interest at this point to resign. I get phone calls all the time, I have people approach me in the community and outside the community. I feel like I spend most of my energy on what, what you've been a part of, and it hasn't been positive. And it's exhausting, I want to be spending my time as an alderman in a positive way and not with this junk. And I was so upset when I seen the fact that, you know, Bill and Josh are over there working on your property. I'm just like, wait a minute, we're in this position to serve, not be served. I mean, it just, it was, it's just one of those, it's another disappointing thing that we had to see and hear about. And not just people approach you and tell you about it and call you on the phone, but then it's all over, you know, Facebook and everything. I'm just like, what the heck, what part of that did you think was okay? I just, I just, all of it, I'm just, I'm over it, and I just, I feel that it's just time for you to just resign and step away.
Joyce, how do you, how do you feel about it?
The, the fact that everything that's been brought to the surface here, just talking about it this evening. I know this has been ongoing, it just didn't happen overnight, but what they're bringing forth and what they're talking about here, I think to some, some sort of action of some sort, whether it be up to the mayor to make that decision or how that decision needs to be made, for the best interest of everyone.
I kind of feel about the same way she is about that. Line things out and then change the rules, or abide by all rules maybe.
Thank you, Daryl.
So I think in retrospect to what these two gentlemen have given us tonight, as, you know, as things that, as the possible alternatives that we can pursue, with Jim violating the ordinances and then violating, not just the city ordinances, but, but well other, other, other laws. Like, like Joyce and Daryl said, you know, there has to be some type of action taken. Whether it be like they said, some type of, you know, with the, with the union contract that he signed. That's just one of, that's just one of numerous contracts that he signed without the council's permission. The hiring of the city collector was done, the salary was not, you know, the salary was not discussed and the, the appointment was not made. Next thing you know, we have a new city collector, it says very clearly in the ordinances that it should be appointed by the mayor with the advice of instead of the city council. In fact, a lot of the things that you read in the, in the code say, anything after them, anything after it says mayor, it says with the advice of instead of the city council. And, and since you've been elected, Jim, I, I feel that you haven't done that, to the point of where we have legal issues. It's very disturbing. You know, I, I try to, I try to make a positive, as Rachel said, I try to make a positive image of this city. I work hard on a lot of different things, including the economic advisory board, the water co-op, I'm on three committees. You know, I, I try to do a lot of work and I have a big picture of how this town can get better. And to be honest with you, I, I don't feel that it can until, until you're no longer the mayor. In my opinion, I, I would suggest that you resign. Otherwise, I think there should be legal action taken, and that's my opinion.
To be completely fair to everybody, Jim, I'll give you a time to talk now.
Well, my, I don't know. I felt that what we was doing out there on that, on the sewer project, I thought we was getting it done pretty good and I felt that, not that our guys couldn't have done it, but I wanted our guys to be out there and have some people that was knowledgeable about it to help them get it going and help them get going on. As far as any other contract, I don't remember signing any other contract. There was one brought up, an application brought up.
That's a contract.
For, uh, best, for Dollar General. And, uh, Josh was in there when, in, in the room when, uh, Laura Lee brought it to me. And asked me to sign it because she'd had approved, uh, to get it, to get a Best Buy card. So I didn't.
A Best Buy, oh, a Dollar General Best Buy card?
Dollar General, I'm sorry, Dollar General.
And did she tell you when, when it was approved, or did you ask her when it was approved by the council to enter into this agreement?
Yeah, she said. Well, yeah, she said it was already approved, the cards were already on the way and, and we just had to sign that to send it to them. So you signed the contract, you were just unknowing that you weren't supposed to sign the contract? I thought it was already approved by Jim Fuhr, to be honest with you. Uh, because that comes to me not too long, well, Josh was hired, so, uh, she brought it to my attention. And she, I guess she had had it all set up online. And when she asked me to sign that, I, I signed it.
Jim, I was there and you asked Laura to do the application, you're the one that wanted to do the Dollar General card. Jim Fuhr never mentioned it, the, the contract was signed in August. I've got the contract here that you signed in October with the union. Um, you never brought any of this to the council's knowledge. And frankly, you know, if you're not aware, it doesn't make it okay. Ignorance is not an excuse.
The, the, uh, the dollar store I was brought to by Laura Lee.
But you signed it, so you have to take responsibility for your own action?
And she, she said it was already approved.
Well, that, no, you have been at the meeting, you signed it in August.
I understand that.
So you have been coming to the meeting since April, so she was saying it was approved six months prior?
Uh, she said it was, had been approved already. Josh, what did the lady say? This is, this is one in, in many, I don't, I don't think we need to hash out all the details of that right now. You can continue to talk to it if you'd like, or is there anything else you have to add?
This, while, while we're on contracts, because you were only aware of the one, we obviously have another one. Is there some type of contract that was signed with the railroad? Or was that just a verbal agreement that was made that we would pay them ninety-one hundred dollars for a flagger? Without asking the city council about those funds?
Greg come to me on that and it was in our permits that we had to have flaggers. And when Bill got the permits from Matt, or Matt gives the permits to, uh, Bill, that's when we found out we had to have flaggers. Well, and before we found that out, Greg had already come to us and said that we had to pay for flaggers and, uh, locate. And we paid for seven days of flagging. And which come, which we was told, I think it was thirteen hundred dollars per day. And Greg brought it to my attention of what we had to pay the, the amount. And the woman that she had called, or he had talked to, would not talk to anybody but Greg. So when you said we paid that, what was the process for us paying that? Uh, Greg brought it to our attention and we had to send it as overnight. So I believe you came up to city hall, uh, got a, had a check made out for ten thousand dollars and had, went to the people to have it signed. Sent the check without it ever going through the normal payment process. Of approving the bills and even telling the council that you had gotten a check for ten thousand dollars. Greg, and, and I'm, and I'm, the, the best I, that I can remember here was Greg come to me with the amount. To get it overnighted to them. I didn't sign no contract for them, it was in our, it was in the, uh, permit, our work permit.
Who signed the check?
I did, and.
That's a contract.
So did, I mean, you know, I'm not the only one that had signed it, but I'm not, I'm not get, trying to get out of anything on that. That was in our, that was in our, our railroad permit that we had to do that, which we didn't know that we had to have flaggers out there and locate, them locate. And that was all brought to me by the engineer. And then we got the permit after that, and it was in, it was in the permit from the railroad. That we had to pay flaggers. So that was already, that was basically their what, I can't even remember, when, when did we get the permits on that, Matt?
Oh, they were, those permits were done a year before.
Yeah, it, that, that, and it was all in that permit that we had to have flaggers, railroad flaggers.
So the normal process of paying the bills to the city are, we go through these, all these right here have a check waiting for them. You know the process because you've signed them before, they're probably already signed, just waiting to be approved. But on this particular check, you signed it and sent it off before it went through this process?
Yeah, because we, we.
Because you had to, or because, I, I don't get the have to. I'm not sure, I just, I don't get it.
So it wasn't in the permit, what happened was when they shut down Lip Road without telling anybody, a lot of the businesses in town called the railroad and complained. And the railroad then called the mayor and shut him down and said they weren't gonna start the project back up until they paid him ten thousand dollars.
We did, we didn't shut down Lip Road, that was even before.
We did close Lip Road.
That was way after when we got the permit, permission to start back up. That, go ahead, Bill.
I have the permit here.
It was received February, February twenty fifteen. And if you go through here, it says that we have to have flaggers and. I don't think anybody's contesting that.
Nobody's, yeah, nobody's contesting the fact that you had to have flaggers, Jim.
It's right here in the permit, I mean, this was two thousand.
No one's contesting the permit. We're asking the process of, of why the check was signed without going through the.
Proper channels.
The proper quick report. I mean, why was it sent off? Why did it have to be, once it's overnighted, you didn't think it would be wise to bring any of the council members on, on a ten thousand dollar check that you signed without our approval? And sent off and paid somebody? The checks do not leave this building until they are approved.
Well, I agree with you on, on that, on, on our bills and stuff. I can't help it when, when an engineer calls you up and says, hey, I'm on the way there, we gotta pay this or we.
You can, you cannot sign the check. And maybe, maybe, you know, bring the reins back a little bit on the force main and say, hey, let's reevaluate where we're at with this and get some other people involved.
Call an emergency meeting.
Could've called an emergency meeting.
And if I, I guess I should've done that on, on, on the railroad on getting the flaggers.
From the start of it.
Okay. So, anything else you'd like to add, Jim, just so you have your chance? No, I really don't. Okay. Um, I think the council's in agreement and I would, I would like you to think about this. The charges that you may face are felonies. You can disagree whether you did them or not, I, I don't care. Uh, next meeting, if you don't resign, uh, I'll have a vote to push forward with those charges. And the, we'll go, I don't know what process is for that, but we will start that process. If you don't resign before that time, uh, we will continue the process until you're found guilty or not and you can weigh the punishment. I'll leave that to you. But, um, I think if you wanted to resign right now, it would be a good time. The other option that I'd also get the council's opinion in, um, signing the contract is a breach of our code. Which is finable on our codes by a fine up to seven hundred fifty dollars. I think we can enforce that at the beginning of the next meeting, whether you resign or not. That's kind of what I'm thinking and I'll let you be the judge, but that's kinda how I had on the, on, on that topic.
So if he's fined by the ordinance and doesn't pay it, is that a debt to the municipality?
Correct. And in case you didn't know, if you are found guilty of these crimes, you will forfeit your position, uh, as mayor. I have some Illinois codes here, I've highlighted the, the parts that you violated and what I think the city has a pretty strong case on. Uh, I'm, I don't wanna waste the time to go through them now, I'll just, I'll just give them to you and you can look through them and, and read them for yourself. And that's, that's all I had. Lynn, would you like to add anything? Does anybody else?
Does anybody have any, does any of the aldermen have anything else to speak or of, or?
I just had one quick question.
Yes, Mike.
Pursued to what you guys were talking about with the mayor's presence, uh, how does that work out with, uh, employment? Like with people being hired without going through the proper channels?
That would be another violation. The only violation of employment that I'm aware of is the city collector. And this is nothing against Paula, cause I think she's doing a great job. Uh, they, they interviewed, they interviewed, we were aware that we were gonna find a different city collector. Uh, we interviewed, but it, but she probably worked here three months before I finally looked up and said, you know, we never approved that. We didn't approve her salary and we didn't approve her appointment. Are you, like, in reference to your past employment with this, Mike, or?
No.
Okay. That's the only one that I can think of, is, is Paula.
I don't believe we need a motion to adjourn, since it's a committee meeting and I think that's all. The streaming thing.
We, we got this recovered, I'm sure everybody can find that online.
I got, I got prices, like, six hundred dollars to set up. Twenty bucks to go on.
Can you buy a tour of our website?
Yes.
Add one represent. I didn't wanna spend money. I will, I will do that.
Motor fuel tax. New side walk. For patching and painting. Can't put a whole new sidewalk.
I'm not aware that you can.
Sixty forty on sidewalks.
You know, I can't find anywhere that's ready. Is it in the code or is it just a resolution?
Yeah. I see, I was like. Mike was going for the sidewalk in his house. Where's he going? To be from sidewalk to his house?
He said he was gonna do it from there to the corner. No, no, he wants to, he wants to put a new sidewalk in from his front porch to the city sidewalk.
Yeah, that's all his.
No, I know, and he said while he's doing it, he just wants to do it all. That way there's not one nice new piece of sidewalk and then the rest of the. Which I don't think the sidewalk.
Forty plus years ago, just like you guys talking, one person, city starts doing it, you can't get the money to do the whole town.
No, you can't. And, you know, I like, I like his idea with, of an application, we set aside some money, hey, we'll drop fifteen thousand dollars in sidewalks. But you have to apply, once you apply, we'll go through those and, and find, you know, which, which, which is the most pressing priority.
And there's things that have to be in luck, that they have to, if they fail, you're tested that within thirty days and received a notice. So it has to, you know, if, if. And I suggest you just do it to all of the municipal black families. If they're behind on the water bill, I'm certain they'll be back there in thirty days. Now, check the day that he's behind on his debt, the day he scores in the office, that notice is invalid. Whoever does your waters, let me turn this, whoever does your water bill.